Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome one and welcome all. We welcome you to the March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting. And thank you all for coming. We're glad you're here. I'm calling the meeting to order and with that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Bill Goins if he will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Please stand. Most kind and gracious headed fathers, we come to you tonight. Father, we thank you for your grace and for your mercy. Father, we thank you for all that you do for us and the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Father, we pray that you would be with us as we go through this meeting tonight. And Father, we just ask that you be with those here that are present. Give them safe travels as they go home tonight. Father, help us as we make decisions that affect the citizens of this county. Father, be with our law enforcement, our EMS, and all who stand to protect and serve this great nation. And Father, in all things, we'll give you the praise and honor and glory of what's in Christ's name and prayer.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goins. Gentlemen, you've had time to look at your packet. I'm looking for a motion for approval of tonight's agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner Mark Marion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Larry Johnson. Any discussion? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The agenda has been approved. Also, looking in your packet, you will see a couple of sets of meeting minutes, one being the long day of February the twenty-eighth at our annual board retreat. And the other being, that was on February the twenty-eighth, twenty thousand, twenty twenty-four, and on March the fourth, our general meeting that followed, uh, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm looking for a motion. I'll take it in one to approve both sets of minutes. Gentlemen, looking for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Bill Goins. Looking for a second.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Harris to approve the minutes of February the twenty-eighth and March the fourth. Any discussion? Being none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And with that, it looks like we have quite a lengthy consent agenda tonight, and we want to be fully transparent here. And I'm going to ask our county manager, Chris Knopf, if you will, to read each bullet point that we're going to be talking about in tonight's consent agenda. And of course, there's copies that will be made available and have been to all. Go ahead, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the Tax Department end of month summaries, charges, and reports. Next is an ambulance franchise renewal for Northern Regional Hospital. They've just completed their first year. This renewal is for five years. Next is a request from HR for the transfer of sick leave for a new employee. Uh, next is Office of State Personnel Delegated Authority for DSS hires to a DSS employee. Next are some write-offs for the Fire Marshal's Office to balance invoices, twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, and twenty twenty-two. Now, that's ninety dollars. Next is a grant request for animal control from the Sheriff's Department. Next item is budget amendment number nine from the Finance Office. The next item, bid of surplus property Maple Grove Church Road, that needs to be pulled for board discussion. Next is a surplus property, a request to surplus property that the county is now in ownership of following tax foreclosure. It's on West Herman Church Road. Next is surplus and transfer ownership of a K-nine in the Sheriff's Office. Next item is a scope of work and amendments to the North State Environmental and Resource Institute contract, and this is tied to the two million award from the state that the county has. Next item is to move our fleet GPS tracking devices from the current vendor to Carolina West Wireless. Next is to approve the low bid for the Parks and Recreation Office building of Fisher River Park. And finally, from the Health Department is a purchase request for an ice machine. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. And I believe you've asked to pull the bid of the surplus property concerning Maple Grove Church Road. With that exception, gentlemen, I am looking for a motion to approve the tonight's consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Motion to approve tonight's consent. Do I hear a second? Second for Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? Being none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving right along, we're going to have some special recognition, and I believe Daniel is here and Bradley is here and some other folks here that might want to participate in that, so come on down and, uh, tell us who you want to call up. Where down you go? Down you here? Yeah, there you are.
Bradley?
Okay, what's your, where'd Larry go? Start us off there, Commissioner Marion. If you will, all right.
Well, I'm on, started off with the very special lady Patty Brain. John, you might as well come on up too. The County of Surrey to Patty Brain, Yakima Valley Senior Games, has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a gold medal in the tennis singles and a silver medal in the tennis mixed doubles competition. Presented this the eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations. All right, Mr. John. I hear. The County of Surrey to John Brain, Yakima Valley Senior Games, has hereby presented the certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a silver medal in the tennis mixed doubles competition. Presented this the eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. So I'd say the mixed doubles was with, with Miss Brain. All right. Michelle O'Rourke. How are you? You're great. The County of Surrey to Michelle O'Rourke. Yakima Valley Senior Games has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, finishing sixth place in bowling singles and bowling doubles competition and fifth place in bowling mixed doubles competition. Presented this the eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations. Sam Crowley the third. Eric Davis. All right. Ron Bale. Nancy Edwards. County of Surrey, Nancy Edwards, Yakima Valley Senior Games, has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a bronze medal in bowling singles, sixth place in bowling doubles, and twelfth place in bowling mixed doubles competitions. Presented this the eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations. Hobert Freeman. Jangling.
Jingle.
I have to read this. Yeah, County of Surrey, Hobert Freeman, Yakima Valley Senior Games, has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a silver medal in the four hundred meter dash, fifteen hundred meter dash, a bronze medal in the five K run, and finished fourth place in the two hundred meter dash competitions. Presented this the eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations. Lindsey Gray. Kim Hefter. Tommy Holloman. To, to, County of Surrey, Tommy Holloman, Yakima Valley Senior Games, has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a gold medal in horseshoes competition. Presented this eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations, Tom. David Hostetler. All right. John Barron. Nope. Jack Jernigan. No. Okay. Robert Keck. Nope. Look, I'm, I'm hitting a hundred, batting a thousand, all right. Jackie Lewis. All right. Come on up, Jackie. How you doing tonight, Jackie? Good. Jackie Lewis, Yakima Valley Senior Games, you are hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima County Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning gold medals in the basketball shooting, football throw, and the tennis doubles competition. Be good. Presented this eighteenth day of March twenty-fourth, and the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. And congratulations, sir. Jim Logan. Jim Logan? Nope, Jim's not here. All right.
Oh, okay, sorry to hear that.
Mark Marion. I mean, really? Is this? Is this for real? Okay, all right. County of Surrey, certificate of recognition to Mark Marion, Yakima Valley Senior Games. Mark has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals in the golf competitions. Surprise, surprise. Presented this eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Chairman Mark Marion, Vice Chairman Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. That was fun. Terry Martin. Terry Martin. Larry Moore. Randy Moore. This is another surprise, surprise. Welcome, Randy. Nice to see you. Uh, County of Surrey, Randy Moore, Yakima Valley Senior Games. Randy has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a gold medal in football throw and bocce competitions, a silver medal in the softball throw and mini golf competitions, a bronze medal in cornhole singles competition, finished fourth place in the horseshoes competition, and fifth place in basketball shooting. Did you really do all that? Presented this eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Chairman Mark Marion, Vice Chairman Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. My pleasure to congratulate you, sir. Terry Oliver. Yeah, he's, he's, he's he's got the rattle going on too, yeah. All right, County of Surrey, for Terry Oliver, Yakima Valley Senior Games. Terry has hereby presented this certificate certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a bronze medal in the two hundred meter dash competition, presented this eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Chairman Mark Marion, Vice Chairman Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations, Terry.
Sixty miles an hour.
Wow. Amy Peters. Okay. Jim Reeves. Don't think Jim's here. Gary Stevens. Okay. Reese Stiles. Okay, there's only one left, and I know that person's here. In fact, I'm gonna make him wait a little bit. Joseph Celestic. And other, otherwise known as the Peanut Man. Is that right?
Yes, sir, we're getting ready.
Okay, County of Surrey, Joseph Celestic, uh, Yakima Valley Senior Games is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakima Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-three North Carolina Senior Games State Finals in the golf competition. Wow, who won?
We carpooled together.
Y'all carpooled together?
But we were different age groups.
We did.
And different scores.
And different scores, okay. I just wanted to know, did anybody get a birdie?
Yeah, a couple.
All right.
Second day.
What kind was it? A pigeon or a robin or what was it? No, okay. Oh, no. Okay, eagle, there you go. Presented this eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations, Joe.
Go right ahead.
Uh, yeah, we'd like, we love to celebrate senior games every year. But this year, we lost a very special man. Senior Games. I was pretty close to Jack. I've known him for years, and I've known his wife for all of her life. And, uh, Jack Moore, he was an ambassador for, for a lot of different things. When I read his obituary, I didn't realize he, he was involved in so much stuff, getting the children, helping to get the children's center started, uh, way back when. And, uh, Jack was just a special guy. He was a delight to be around, keep his family in your prayers. And Jack, we miss you, buddy.
Okay, Bradley, you want to get them up for pictures or, you have to say however you want to do it. Bring them, bring them all up, any and all that you want. Yeah, line up in front of us, be good.
Somebody good looking.
You got a medal, let me see your medal.
Congratulations to all you seniors and your warriors.
I can find it.
All right, let's give them a minute here. They're trying to clear. Okay. Moving right along, tonight we come to the time on our agenda that we have open forum. Anyone out there that would like to come up and address the board, we'll give you two or three minutes to do so. Uh, speak on most any topic you want. If you will, just come up, give your name, your phone number, tell us what's on your mind, and you're welcome to come. So at this time, the forum is open. Any takers? All right.
We have.
Yeah, we got one. Come on up, sir.
I'm not used to doing this. I'm more nervous. Uh, I put a bid in on the property at Maple Grove Church Road. And I took some pictures of it today and made some copies of it. I didn't make before copies.
We'll pass them around.
The bid I put in is low, and I realize it's low, and I appreciate the county I live in, and I'm not trying to hoodoo the county. The reason it's low, it's got a dilapidated house that needs to be removed, a building that needs to be removed. And pictures will attest to that. And there's three enormous trees. Pieces of them about like it at the bottom. It's a big mess. It needs cleaning up. It's a sore on our community. And the bottom line is ain't nobody paying taxes on it. No revenue's coming in. And I would be willing to offer that offer and, uh, clean up the property and, and get reassessed for the value that it really actually is worth. The house and stuff is not worth anything. And them pictures show that. And I appreciate y'all's time.
Oh, man, they might, we just found phone number, name and phone. We need to get your name and phone number again, please.
Okay.
Just tell us what your phone number is.
Three, three, six.
Okay.
Six, four, eight, thirty-eight, forty-eight. Miranda has my email and information also.
All right, we, they get back to that. We, sir, name and name?
Chris Moore.
Chris Moore.
Thirteen sixty-one Maple Grove Church Road.
Okay. We're looking at these pictures. Gentlemen, you got any? We'll pass them around here. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome to. Let's see, you'd made a previous offer, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
It's in, it's what we took out of consent.
That's the one we removed tonight, Chris. Okay, all right. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll roll that all over. Thank you for coming. We'll look at your picture if you want them back when they get through. You can set them on top. Okay, you want us to keep them? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, anyone else for open forum? All right, there being none, looks like we are through with open forum, so open forum is now closed. And that moves us to tonight's next agenda item, which is, uh, concerning some development services. And with that, I will ask you, Mr. Marty Needham, Development Service Director, to come up. State the particular case you're talking about, and then we'll have you sit down and we'll open up the public forum.
Evening, Commissioners. The first one we have tonight is case number ZCR one, two, three, seven. The applicant is David Ferris. The proposal is to reclassify point six, eight, nine acres of his seven point four, seven acre property from rural agriculture to community business conditional, with the remaining parcel maintaining the rural agricultural zoning. Apartment is in an open area of low to medium residential density as direct road frontage on Turner Mountain Road. Staff communicated in person and via phone with applicant in December of twenty-three. Community business conditional was deemed adequate and sufficient for this reclassification request. The request follows the twenty forty land use plan consistency principles pertaining to isolated business providing amenities not available in the immediate vicinity. The business shall remain non-intrusive on the surrounding rural agriculture and residential uses and continue to blend well with the existing residential and agricultural framework of the community. The planning board heard the case last Monday, and it was unanimously approved.
Okay. All right, with that said, now is the time to consider a rezoning case, and I will declare a public forum, and it is now open. So anybody wishing to speak to it, for it, against it, any comments concerning it, now would be the time to come to, uh, the open mic and speak in open forum. Yes, sir. Public hearing, sorry. Thank you, sir. Public hea- Public hearing. Now open concerning rezoning case number ZCR one, two, three, seven. Mr. David Ferris. Okay. All right. Looks like there are no takers. So the public hearing is now closed. Marty, Howard, how do you want to proceed?
Just a note for, this is a conditional rezoning request. Just as a side note for the Commissioners, the other two rezonings tonight are straight-up rezonings. Conditional rezoning, you may take a look at and consider, and you must consider, uh, the site plan that was submitted by the applicant and what the applicant says they're going to do, which is a small motor vehicle repair on an isolated part of the property, uh, with the buffer set out as set forth in the site plan. Um, and then you must decide whether or not, uh, if there's consensus that you're going to grant or deny it, whether or not the petition, uh, complies with the, in your opinion, complies with twenty forty land use plan or is consistent with it, and whether or not it is reasonable and in the public interest. And you can make all that motion at the same time, uh, and you, you should make it, uh, at least some findings to support that. You may wish to adopt the findings that were made by the Planning Board as set forth in their recommendation, which is in your packet.
Okay. Gentlemen? There's no comments in public hearing, uh, you've heard the presentation from the county staff, you've heard the explanation from our attorney, Howard Jones, concerning development services. Uh, you have heard his request and instructions on approval or non-approval pertinent to whether the zoning amendment is or is not consistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan twenty forty or reasonable and in the public interest. Uh, any, any? Any action, gentlemen? Any recommendation?
Just make a motion. I make a motion that we reclassify the point six, eight, nine acres to, from rural agriculture to community business conditional, uh, based on the recommendation of the Planning Board. Uh, and the request, uh, that they found follows the twenty twenty, excuse me, the twenty forty land use plan consistency principles pertaining to isolated businesses, uh, providing amenities not available in the immediate vicinity. Uh, the business shall remain non-intrusive on the surrounding rural agricultural and residential uses and continue to blend well with the existing residential and agricultural framework of the community.
Just for clarification, that Commissioner, that is to adopt.
That is correct.
Motion is to adopt the findings of the Planning Board and to make a motion to change the reclassification on the zoning from rural agriculture to community business conditional use. All right. We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion of Commissioner Bill Goins, second, from Commissioner Larry Johnson, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, unanimous decision, thank you. Okay. Next item, call, uh, Marty Needham with Development Services for Surrey County.
This is case number two for tonight.
Yes.
Bill and then Larry. Okay, go ahead, Marty.
This is case ZCR one, two, three, nine. The applicant is Pilot SE, represented by Corey George. The proposed, the proposal is to reclassify three point one, eight, nine acres of a twenty-nine point nine, six parcel from rural agriculture to highway business. Property, property is located at the intersection of Interstate seventy-four and Highway six oh one in Mount Airy. Property has direct road frontage on Rockford Street and South McKinney Road. Staff communicated via phone and in person with applicant in January of twenty twenty-four. Highway business zoning was requested by the applicant. The parcel in question is addressed in the Surrey County Small Area Plan as suitable for commercial development. The twenty forty land use plan further identifies the property as a commercial center and encourages highway-oriented commercial development where compatible with surrounding uses. The Planning Board recommended approval of this rezoning.
Okay. Anything else, Ed? Thank you. And this is, uh, ZCR one, two, three, nine? Okay, so we got two in here, one, one, two, three, nine. All right, I will now open a public hearing concerning the rezoning case number ZCR one, two, three, nine. And, uh, applicant Pilot SC PC, Mr. Corey George. Corey, you want to make some comments, please come forth. Give us, I guess we'll give us, tell us who you are and what your number is.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Corey George, uh, number's three, three, six, four, two, two, six, seven, four, one. I am the applicant on behalf of the property owners, and, uh, we are petitioning to rezone this from RA to HB. Um, you've heard from staff, staff recommended approval, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this. As it is located next to the highway, it seems to make sense for us for this to be highway business, so we request that you approve our petition.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions, comments, anything for Corey? Okay. Okay, thank you, Corey. Anyone else would like to comment on case number for rezoning, ZCR one, two, three, nine? Anyone else? No one else for a public hearing concerning this matter? All right, we now will declare the public hearing closed. Gentlemen, I'm looking for action.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
To make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency and to rezone the ZCR twelve, thirty-nine from rural agriculture to highway business.
Okay, and we'll, and I guess you were saying that you would want to also add that to propose zoning amendment is consistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan of twenty forty, it's reasonable and in the public interest. And it is so because, according to this report from planning, that the Planning Board recommends that the parcel in question is addressed in the Surrey County Small Area Plans as suitable for commercial development, and the twenty forty land use plan further identifies this par- property as a commercial center and encourages highway-oriented commercial development where compatible with surrounding uses, is that right? That is your.
That would be the statement of consistency, yes.
Yeah, they just asked me to clarify that statement of consistency.
That's my motion.
Yeah. Yes, yes, and, and, and that's his motion. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Mark Marion. Do we hear a second? Second. Okay, a second from Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries, and the rezoning for ZCR one, two, three, nine from rural agricultural highway business has occurred, thank you. Mr. Needham? Go right ahead.
This is the last one for this evening, this is case ZCR one, two, four, zero. Applicant Pilot SE, represented by Corey George. The proposal is to reclassify nine point five acres from rural agriculture to highway business. Property is located in the intersection of Highway fifty-two South and Charlie Norman Road in Mount Airy. The property has direct road frontage on Highway fifty-two and Charlie Norman Road. Manufacturing industrial and highway business zoning are located in the immediate vicinity. Staff communicated via phone and in person with applicant in February of twenty twenty-four. Highway business zoning was requested and deemed sufficient for this applicant. Request meets the requirements of the twenty forty land use plan, consistency principles referenced herein in your packet. Intersection has existing highway-oriented commercial uses along Highway fifty-two North, and the Highway Business Zoning District is suitable for interchanges and major thoroughfares. Planning Board recommended approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Needham. And now we will open a public hearing concerning the rezoning case number DCR one, two, four, zero from rural agricultural to highway business. Mr. George, please come on up and tell us what's on your mind with this case.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Corey George, three, three, six, four, two, two, six, seven, four, one. We, uh, as Mr. Needham had indicated, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this one as well, and staff also recommended approval of this one, again, located behi- beside the highway. Uh, so trying to keep development moving in the county, we ask that you approve our petition to rezone to highway business.
Okay. Anything else, any questions, gentlemen? Anyone else?
Who, who is Pilot SE? Who is that?
That is me.
That is you?
Yes, sir, that is, uh, it's shorthand for pilot surveying and engineering, and we, uh, routinely represent clients in, uh, rezoning and similar petitions.
Okay, and who is your client?
The client for this one, I believe, is IDR LLC, and that, um, I think the Secretary of State manager is David Rowe.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other questions? Corey, anything else?
That's all for me.
Anyone else, any questions? Okay. Yes, sir. Come on up. Tell us who you are, you, what your name is and your phone number, and we're talking about this, uh, rezoning case, ZCR one, two, four, zero.
My name's Larry Reese, three, three, six, seven, eight, nine, three, eight, eight, seven.
Thank you.
Uh, I own some land adjoining this, and I've got a, like a ten-foot right of way where they're going to be building. And I just want to make sure that when they build, they're going to have to do a lot of grading and everything. They don't mess my ten-foot up, fix it somewhere where when I get ready to build a road through it, it won't cost me nor in a, more in the long run than it is before they do the grading and everything.
I understand. I don't know that that issue blends in with our rezoning issue here tonight, but I will ask anyone from Representative County Attorney to weigh in on that answer a little more efficiently than I just did.
That, that would be a private matter, that would be governed by property law a- and with regard to your interest in the right of way and whatever interest the owner has. And so whether or not it's zoned RA, HB, uh, MI, what, whatever the zoning classification is, has noth- has no effect and on, on a right of way, and we can't consider a right of way with regard to that, so I would respectfully suggest that speak to Mr. George.
Yeah, I, I think that's not, uh, something that comes before us here tonight as far as a factor in rezoning the property, but Mr. George is here, he's a nice fellow, I'm sure he'll be happy to talk to you about this, and, uh, hopefully and probably satisfy you before you leave tonight.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else with comments or questions concerning case number rezoning, uh, case ZCR one, two, four, zero? Okay. All in, all said, nothing else, gentlemen? Okay, we will now close the public hearing for case number ZCR one, two, four, zero, and I will make a motion that we will approve the rezoning on this particular parcel from rural agriculture to highway business, and that the proposed zoning is consistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan twenty forty reasonable and in the public interest, and in agreement with the Planning Board that this request meets the twenty-four, twenty forty land use plan. This, uh, reference herein, the intersection has existing highway-oriented and commercial uses along Highway fifty-two North, that the Highway Business Zoning District is suitable for interchanges along major thoroughfares, and for those reasons, I make this motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a, from me and, uh, second from Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion? Being none, all in favor for rezoning case is ZCR one, two, four, zero, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Rzoning is complete, thank you. Thank you, Mr. George. Thank you. You may be excused, Mr. Jones. Ed, you going to hang around, you won't be excused. Uh, well, we, we, we appreciate that, thank you. Uh, all right.
No, you're good.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess.
I thought maybe. You remember that one?
Beats me, I forgot it, if I did. Won't know much. How's everything your way?
Good.
All right. All right. Moving right along, I see we have someone here that's on the agenda, but we're running a little ahead of schedule. So rather than skip over him, I see somebody else that's here, and we'll go to you first. And I will ask Ms. Jessica Montgomery with Public Works and our Public Works Director to please come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So before you, you see a letter that we've all put together, a memo, is about the privacy screening at the jail. The folks along Ryan Street have had a temporary screening up during construction, and it's time to put something permanent there. And we have several different options to present before you. It can be a wooden privacy fence, vinyl fence, chain link fence, a Trex-type material fence, or preformed concrete blocks, or even a vegetative buffer. And of course, we could do a combination of any of these items as well. I've listed out the prices here, and I do have a correction to make to the last bullet point vegetative buffer. I must have got a little calculator happy there, and it's supposed to be $37,400 instead of the 50. The vegetative buffer, but that does not include labor and maintenance. So you'll see all the different prices there, and under chain length, I even gave you the option of a 10-foot tall fence and an eight-foot tall fence and the difference of those prices there.
And the vegetative was?
Thirty-seven, five.
Instead of 53.
I think I calculated a couple of trees a couple of times, so Daniel kindly corrected that number for me.
And the labor here that he's calculated, Daniel, would be the first dry summer that they need watering and some, what, some general maintenance thereafter until they got some growth. Come on in. Tell us about the labor there.
The way that the vegetative buffer is designed or to be installed based off of the drawings is to basically dig an area out that's 25-foot wide, go in there and pack soil underneath each one of these plants, and then come back in and spread the material in around it because it's a pretty high density. You know, it's a low story, and then it's a middle story. And then the big struggle is going to be able to find stock that is tall enough to meet what I've talked to about Mitchells and some of these other folks places. You know, we're going to be lucky to be able to meet the minimum requirement on height. That's one of the reasons why we didn't really look at arbor vatties. They're just not available unless you do a ball and burlap arbor vatty. And it's going to take four or five years with a ball and burlap for it to become established and really start growing. So it's going to take a while for this buffer to fill in. But based off of the drawings and just taking it straight off of it and then the rent of an excavator and a couple bits, that kind of thing, that would be the price. And the labor, the labor part of it is, you know, we've got, we've got plenty to do. We've got a lot on our plate. And I would have to take them off of other projects, have to take them off of the maintenance of the lawns. It's, it's pretty in-depth how this is. Plus, I did look at, you know, it's like, I know it's silly to break it down this way, but it's like $21 a week in, in water and then 240 hours for an employee, two employees, to get all of that done in a day's time. And if we go to a twice-a-week watering, say we hit another 20-day stretch or 18-day stretch like we did, it's going to be even more than that because you have to water them twice a week to get them to take. The other thing that we'll be battling there is there's a really bad infestation of English ivy. And I think anything that we put in there is going to be a constant battle to keep that English ivy out of it as well. So anyway, that makes sense.
All right. Anything else, Jessica?
There are three buildings that Ed Waltz is looking at contacting those property owners. They have three outbuildings that are on our property there. Once those buildings are relocated off our property, we're going to have ample room to do any of these screening.
But probably with most any of them, they're going to have to be, it's going to have to be addressed.
Yeah, they need to be moved off. I mean, just to allow enough room, but I think it should be addressed now if any time.
And we also have encroachments. We have at least three. And we have letters ready to go out asking people to alleviate the encroachment. And as part of what y'all do tonight, I would ask that you allow us to consult with the surveyor that did the plat. Should push come to shove and the property owners disagree that there is an encroachment, might as well just nip that in the bud tonight.
Well, it really determines what we go with, whether they would be considered an encroachment. You know, they've been there for years, and that's what's been said. So, and it's already a temporary fence there. I've been in their backyards several times, talking to the homeowners. And the one that's there now is like eight foot tall. And I like the looks, and you can barely, you can see the top of the detention center on their backyards. But one I like the best, looking at it right now, is the 10-foot chain link with the slats included. And there is, there is a picture of that in here. And I believe that would satisfy these neighbors and look good from the inside and outside. So, you know, we've put them through a lot in all this, and we have accommodated them with their house washings and putting up their privacy fence. And one that I've looked at, it's not the cheapest. It is certainly not the highest. It's next to the cheapest that I saw. Would be the 10-foot tall chain link with the slats.
All right. Still, yet, two different issues. One, there are two or three buildings that are sitting on county property. I'm sure we can do that now. You can prize us of that later, Ed. But it seems to me like you want to go ahead and take action on that regardless of the type of fencing we put up?
Yeah, I think that if y'all decide on what kind of fencing you want tonight, we'll have plenty of time to get the encroachments corrected before the fence is ready to go. I mean, there's just a leak on fencing.
And regardless of how long they've been there, that is a different, that is a different issue than the fencing. You think that issue ought to be addressed anyway, is your recommendation? All right, gentlemen, questions, comments?
I have, how long is the bid good for? These bids?
Typically, 30 days.
Well, that's my concern. If it takes these homeowners, these property owners, like some time to move their, we would suffer if it goes up.
Where their buildings are at now won't impede where this fence goes.
That's more for the vegetative buffer.
Disunderstood then, what you're.
The fence doesn't take up much room at all, but the vegetative buffer, just to give enough room to do it.
The buildings had to be moved first.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things. Depending on what type of barrier we put, they would if we used, if we put vegetative trees down because they're wider. But the other issue is, our county attorney is recommending that we address that issue of the three buildings that are encroaching over on the, what is now the jail property, regardless of what kind of fencing we put up. Is that correct, Ed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My next question would be, what are these slats made out of?
It's, it's like a mesh plastic material.
I just, I want us to do something that we do it and we're done.
I don't think that's doing it and done. I think.
Yeah. I think that's still going to last.
Goes away pretty quickly, doesn't it?
I mean, it's going to, UV is going to deteriorate eventually.
I've seen, I've got some of these chain link fences with a slatted material in them. And some of them's 25, 30 years old, and they're still in pretty good shape.
That's a long time.
They're, that's pretty heavy plastic.
Yes. And then you would just replace that material and not the whole fence.
Just pull them slats out, put new slats in.
Okay. One side would be shaded anyhow, yeah.
Now, you're going to be able to see through it slightly.
Yeah, but there is a picture about three pages back of the chain link.
I want to ask a question. Chris, you probably know this. I've heard it in some of the discussions. And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not dying on this deal. I don't much care what kind of fence we put over there. But, you know, the board's pleasure, whatever the board would like to do about that. So, but what is the ordinance under which we're operating for the town adoption's requirement on the height or the specifications of a fence like this?
Minimum height, eight feet.
Eight feet. Yes, sir.
Minimum of eight?
Yes.
For the vegetative buffer, I think you have two years to get to that height.
I think that's correct.
So anything we do here would be above and beyond their, or at least equivalent or above to their recommendation? Yes. Okay. All right, gentlemen, any other comment?
I like what Commissioner Marion is suggesting.
I agree with Commissioner Marion. Spot on.
All right. Okay, gentlemen, Commissioner Goings, you got anything to add to this? All right, I'm looking for action.
I make a motion. We go with the chain link galvanized fence with slats 10-foot tall. We go alongside the detention center, replacing the temporary fence that's there now.
Okay. Motion for Commissioner Marion?
Thousand-foot long, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
You adding that? Yes, well, that was.
The what?
And to allow to deal with the encroachment?
Allow the county attorney to deal with the encroachments of, what, three buildings?
Okay. I have a motion for Commissioner Marion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Commissioner Harris, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously, and thank you very much. All right. We'd skipped a little bit. We're running a little bit ahead. But I see the honorable and distinguished Eric Southern from the emergency service director's position has now graced us with his presence. Come on up, Eric, and tell us what's on your mind.
Ain't much sneaking in here with y'all.
Well, we have a couple deputies waiting here in the car, but you're good.
Well, I appreciate that. I apologize for being late. I wanted to share with y'all tonight a opportunity, a grant opportunity that we have. It's titled "The Rural Emergency Services Training." It's short titled EMS Training. This is through the Department of Health and Human Services. And what this is for, it is for training EMS personnel in rural areas to particularly focus on addressing substance use disorders, co-occurring mental health conditions, and addressing needs in the community. Part of this grant focuses on trauma-related mental health, recovery-based care, substance abuse disorders and emergency situations. It also looks at maintaining a license and certifications relevant to serving at EMS agencies. Another part of this is it can be shared between multiple departments. So by looking at this, we can actually use some of the funds between EMS, Office of Substance Abuse Recovery, and the Department of Health, or the Health Department, sorry. Some items that you can get through this grant, you can purchase naloxone. You can also purchase other FDA-approved opioid reversal medications, train personnel, resources, procedures, implement procedures on this. Hiring personnel, supporting local peer support specialists in assisting. You can also develop procedures through the Health Department and other county agencies. And then, of course, training is a big portion of this. Again, this is through the Department of Health and Human Services. They're going to award up to 52 grants. This will be all across the United States, so it is a pretty competitive grant, up to $200,000. You do have a matching part of 10% of whatever it is that you receive.
You do not have a handout here available, do you?
I don't believe so. I'm sorry.
You said you didn't have one, so we hadn't seen anything.
Okay.
Any info. So guys, have any, how about any, any questions?
Did I miss how much the grant was or how much?
Up to $200,000.
Up to $200,000.
One thing I will say is I'm just seeking permission to apply for the grant. If we're awarded the grant, I would sit down with the other departments. We would like to talk about it before we accept anything.
So you were just kind of looking for a nod to move along with the process? And before you accepted the grant, you would come back and give us more details?
Yes.
All right. So action on that tonight, gentlemen? I'm looking for a motion to give Eric Southern direction, EMS director. I'll make a motion that we grant him the opportunity to proceed and come back at such said later date to, before finalization and approval. Do I hear a second? Second, Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None? Unanimous decision. Proceed forward. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Chris Kinnoff. County managers' items.
Mr. Chairman, this time I'll bring up the item that was pulled from the consent agenda. The information is within the finance office's submittal in the consent. This property in question is located at 1466 Maple Grove Church Road in Mount Erie. It's 1.14 acres, and it was transferred to the county after a tax foreclosure and deemed surplus by the board on February the 5th of this year. On the 28th, Mr. Chris Moore offered an initial bid of $5,000 for the property. The estimated land value of the parcel is $14,400. And then, of course, he did open the forms, submit those photographs that were passed around.
And he bid, what was that bid?
$5,000.
And we took action on that once already.
Surplus it on February the 5th.
It's a surplus. But no action on accepting any bids, is that correct?
That's what's before you this evening. If you were to accept this, it would begin the upset bid process. And of course, you would have an opportunity at the conclusion of that process, whether to accept or deny it.
Yeah, you reserve the right to deny it any time, and this would just pull the trigger to see if there's a higher bid out there through the upset bid process.
Okay. I'm looking for action. What's your pleasure?
Just by looking at these pictures that he gave us, it cost right about just to get all that burned and took away. But I'd like to make a motion to accept the $5,000 to get the bids started.
Okay, motion for Commissioner Marion to accept the bid of $5,000 to get the process started, subject to upset bid and approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Goings, any discussion?
What was the county valuation on that, Chris?
14,500. According to finance, $14,400.
I bet it cost $7,000, $8,000 to even, to even get started on it. Yeah.
What was it, eight and a half man?
Well, this will start the process.
How much was the acreage? Was it?
1.14.
That's about what it's worth, the land itself.
Yeah, I think that, I think I agree with Commissioner Marion that, yeah.
Okay, I had a motion and a second.
I think Bill's second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Marion, Commissioner Goings, you got that, Andrew. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries, and we start the process. Thank you. Next item, Chris?
My only other item is a memo from the board, or from Andrew Wright, to the board regarding boards and committees. There are a few here. I'll just read through them. And there's one attached that's been included. It came in late that Andrew went ahead and included. It's not on the memo. So Surrey County Child Fatality Prevention Team, there we need to replace former employee Mark Willis with Jamie Edwards. And also, there's a recommendation for Tammy Opman. She's a grant administrator for Stoke Surrey Friends of Youth. Next is the Surrey County Nursing Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee. There's a recommendation for Debbie Brinkley at a one-year term. Surrey Aging Planning Committee, a three-year term to Gina Starbuck. Next, the Surrey County Recreation Advisory Committee, two-year terms for each, Mike Branch, Donna Collins, and Rusty York. And the one that's not on, Wyvede did notify us that Commissioner Harris's seat is up for reappointment in April. So if you want to go ahead and take care of that one tonight, feel free to do so.
Okay, folks. Looking for action? What's your pleasure? You want to do them one at a time?
Do them all at one time if you like.
I just, I'll make a motion that we take the recommendations on all the boards and committee appointments and reappointments that were presented and that Commissioner Harris be reappointed to the Wyvede Board for another three-year term.
Okay. A motion for Commissioner Bill Goings to accept all the recommendations for all the committee members listed here tonight, as well as the reappointment with Commissioner Harris to the Wyvede. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second, Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? Anything you want to add? You got any comment?
I didn't use second. Thank you very much.
I have a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, and it is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Okay, Chris, anything else?
That's all I have. We do have a request for closed session after, uh, general county business.
Okay, gentlemen, look like we've got through here tonight without too much damage and carnage. So, uh, Commissioner Marion, I'll start with you. County, Commissioner, general county business, got any comments?
Just, uh, just one about the, uh, senior games. Uh, I'd thank Daniel and Bradley for, all the crew for all your hard work. Uh, there's a lot to all that stuff, just like the Special Olympics. But, uh, thank all the ones that came out tonight, and, uh, to be recognized. I'm very appreciative of that, and, uh, you know, that, when you still get up and go and compete, uh, it's a good sign, so, uh, I just appreciate everybody coming out.
Mr. Goings?
Everybody coming out tonight.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll get to everything that's been stated.
Okay, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have a resolution tonight, um, at our desk, um, uh, from whence it came, I do not know, but I-
Ask Andrew to put us all a copy in our packet here tonight. You talking about the resolution proposed to the Board of Commissioners concerning the, uh, dog fighting?
And the cock fighting.
And the cock fighting.
Yes, sir, I am.
I was going to let you look at it tonight. I don't know if these other gentlemen has had time to read through it. It was in their email. I, I think it's a wonderful idea. Uh, we can put it off to another time, or we can take it up tonight. It's your pleasure. But go ahead, Commissioner Harris, what's your recommendation?
There's two ways to do it. Uh, I, I like it, I've looked at it, I'm glad it's before the board. Uh, I think cock fighting and dog fighting is abhorrent. Um, I can't imagine what kind of human being even contemplates such an act. And, uh, I think the United States, uh, criminal code and our law enforcement, uh, and these people ought to be treated in the harshest, ugliest, most inhumane fashion that do this. So, uh, there's two ways to do it. We can drop the hammer on it tonight, or we can, um, have it in the public domain until the next meeting. I'm good either way, but I think it's a good resolution.
I'm ready.
All right, I'm ready as well.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we pass a resolution. Uh, Mr., uh, Ed, do I need to read this resolution?
Uh, yes, sir, I haven't seen it, so I'm-
Okay.
Do you, do you want to hold us back, or do you want to?
It is-
Okay, what we could do is, we're going into closed session, I could read it, and then you could take action on it.
When we come back out?
When you come out of closed session.
Okay. All right, it is, uh, based on Senate Bill fifteen twenty-nine, John Kennedy and House, um, uh, Bill two seven four two by U.S. Representative Don Bacon, Repo- uh, Republican Nevada, uh, Ne- Nebraska, I'm sorry, but that's, yeah, it's very straightforward. All right.
Yeah, and every member did get it, and they had told me that you and everyone had had a copy, so I didn't know if you'd read it in the email or not, but, but yeah, we'll do that. We'll, we'll take it up a little bit later. Any other comments? I'd just like to thank everybody for coming here as well and, uh, participating in tonight's meeting. Always glad to have you. And, uh, thank you for helping make Surrey County work. Thank you to all the employees, all the department heads, all the folks that, uh, work so hard. With that said, I am looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into close.
Motion for Commissioner Harris, looking for a second. Second, Bill Goings, in discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are in close.
Okay, gentlemen, we are now back in open session. Okay. I'm looking for any action or motion to adjourn or whatever be the pleasure of this board.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept EMS pay study as presented.
Okay. Have a motion to Commissioner Marion to accept the EMS pay study.
Take effective, be effective April first.
And to adopt it to be effective April the first of two thousand and twenty-four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? I'll have some discussion on that. I, uh... I think this board was pretty, is pretty much in agreement that we're going to address different departments with pay studies and based on need, performance, and all those types of things that our valuable employees contribute to Suri County. I think it's fair to say this board is united in keeping up and doing due diligence on that, but on this particular item, the only difference I think this board would have a little bit of difference in would be when to implement it. And we had a similar incident come up here at the last meeting concerning some, uh, some expansion in some departments, and we've had one that was involved in our board retreat of some new employees, and I agreed to staff some new employees for an apartment, but just by, just because we're going to, this is not a staff increase, but a, of a number of staff, but a increase in pay just for the principle of the being consistent with good fiscal responsibility and just simply because of principle, I, for one, would feel better about this pay study and adopting it if it were to take effect on the new fiscal year of July the first. Just a very few days difference, but still yet, uh, my principal gut feelings and adhering to fiscal responsibility for this board and the expense of our county tax dollars. I would not be in agreement with that, but would rather wait to the new year, a fiscal year, and the date of Ju- July the first two thousand and twenty-four. So I'll just say that. Any other discussion? I concur.
And I'll just say for, for, you know, transparency and for the, for public, for the public to know that that money was in the budget. Had already been a place in the budget, um, so it's not, it's not like we're dipping in general fund. That money was already there. And then there's enough money to take us into the next year that will be put into the budget.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of the way we look at it and whether or not we want to change rules during the middle of the stream, so to speak, on different fiscal budgets that's passed by this board. Any other discussion? Okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
That's a, let's take that again. Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Let the record show, we got three ayes and two nays, the nays, Commissioner Harrison, and myself. All right. Any other business?
Mr. Chairman, we have a resolution at our desk tonight, um, and I think the board would be inclined to adopt it. Um, I'm going to read this. The Fight Act, Senate Bill fifteen twenty-nine by Senator John Kennedy, Republican, Louisiana, and H R two seven four two by Representative Don Bacon, Republican, Nebraska, seeks to bolster enforcement efforts to crack down on the scourge of illegal dogfighting and cockfighting in North Carolina. And throughout the remainder of the United States, the Fight Act has provisions to ban online gambling and/or animal fighting, to halt shipment of adult fighting roosters through the U.S. mail, to enhance criminal forfeiture forfeiture provisions under federal law and to allow citizens to bring civil actions against dogfighters and cockfighters when federal law enforcement failed to interdict breakup known animal fighting criminal syndicates. The Board of Commissioners of Suri County believes that the Fight Act is a proper response to the cruel treatment of animals in staged fights. We believe the following: Dogfighting and cockfighting are barbaric and often bound up with a wide range of criminal practices from gambling to money laundering to narcotics trafficking to mass shootings and murder. U.S.-based cockfighters consult with Mexican cartels and Filipino organized crime syndicates, with those two nations actively trading fighting animals with U.S.-based traffickers. The smuggling of cockfighting birds from Mexico was the cause of ten of fifteen outbreaks of viral, virulent Newcastle disease to hit the United States in recent decades with just three outbreaks costing U.S. taxpayers more than one billion dollars. There are five hundred organizations and agencies that endorse the Fight Act, from Iowa Sheriffs Association to the United Egg Producers, Ohio Poultry Association, to American Gaming Association, to Arkansas Animal Control Association, the National Chicken Council, the Trade Association for Commercial Chicken Producers and Processors, as long as two thousand and four, has urged Congress to pass a bill to crack down on cockfighting and called it inhumane practice that presents a continuing threat to the health of commercial fox, be it flocks. Be it resolved that this Board of Commissioners believes that the Fight Act will allow for the use of more law enforcement tools to disrupt illegal and organized animal fighting crimes. And then the Board of Commissioners for Suri County endorses the Fight Act, urges U.S. Senator Tom Tillis and Ted Budd to co-sponsor S fifteen twenty-nine, and U.S. Representative Virginia Fox to co-sponsor H R twenty-seven forty-two and work diligently to secure its passage in the hundred and eighteen. Congressman, I make that motion, make that resolution in the form of a motion.
I consider your motion, and I wholeheartedly second it, and would just simply add that dogfighting is a vicious blood sport, has no place in a civilized society. Uh, game fighting, cockfighting is not pretty either. I think it's inhumane. I think it's outrageous. I think it's beneath the principles of which most good and reasonable people would adhere to. Uh, I think not only is it horrible thing that we put the animals through when we pick up these, in my opinion, ungodly acts, I think it brings on a crowd and an atmosphere and other illegal activities such as gambling and all kinds of other things that Suri County does not need. I don't think this is rampant in Suri County, but I think it is absolutely vicious, and I think it makes a hard stand that we don't want any part of it, and I wholeheartedly second it. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, uh, be sure to make the manner and use gets copied this resolution, Andrew.
I gave him one.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Nothing else? No more? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Anything else to come before the board tonight?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins, for the motion to adjourn. Commissioner Marion second. All in favor, please say aye.